Can I get the Land Use Committee meeting started?
I'm going to put this in your egg box.
Just a reminder, please turn off all your phones or put them on vibrate as they are disrupting if they go off during the meeting. Please let the record reflect Councilman Weiner, Councilman Sheldon, Councilman Cartier, Councilman Powers, Councilwoman Kilpatrick, Councilman Smiley, Chair Reddick, my aide Valerie's taking notes. Could I have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Second. One favor. Minutes are approved. First item on the agenda, ordinance 13047. Councilman Weiner.
Yes, this, as per title, is an exploratory major land development plan and rezoning for Waggoner's Row proposing to rezone a portion of the existing parcel to S and to create an open space subdivision option two development with 12 single family detached lots with 52 percent open space and to amend the comp plan. In addition, the proposed plan would take the remaining SE zoned parcel and create two single family detached lots. The, as your pleasure, Mr. Chair, as to how you perceive it.
Thank you. Also, let the record reflect Councilwoman Diller is here. I'm Mr. in the back of the room. At this point, GM, go over to you, give us a brief presentation and then we can move to the applicant.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. As Councilman Weiner just said, Waggoner's Row is a 20 acre parcel and 12 of those acres are being requested to be rezoned. It has public sewer and they are looking at maintaining the two large estate lots with the structures and having 12 clustered lots with 50 percent open space. This is a very interesting application. It's an application that is on the National Scenic Byway, Brandywine Valley National Scenic Byway, and so there are a lot of issues that have been brought from the community, the staff, the planning board for consideration. Of course, first is the protection and the enhancement of that byway and the natural forested character. We also, from a land use perspective, wanted to make sure that whatever recommendations we made, they would be recommendations that could serve as a basis for future direction here. And of course, the surrounding communities, the public concerns, were all a part of the process, as well as a comparison to the buy right option versus the rezoning request. This is the scenic byway area. Fifty-two and 100 both have designations and they are certainly areas well worth preserving. You can see that little tiny star is the site. In terms of zoning, the immediate area has a range of densities. If you look at Centennial, they have a relatively low density at .370 use per acre. If you look to the other side of Buck Road, or the other side of Route 100, you have higher densities at 1.87, 1.49. So there's the full range. This site, if you look at the entire site, will have a density of .68 dwelling units per acre. If you look at only the lots being rezoned, their density would be one dwelling unit per acre. The site is sewered. When you, these squiggly lines, what these squiggly lines show is that above this site, the sites where the little red dot is, you don't have any more sewer until you get to Carpenter's Row and the end at Monchan. So everything north, other than existing properties on Route 100, is not sewored. And the next slide shows the close-up of the sewer, which is basically below, south of Buck Road. In terms of the process, it's been extensive. There have been two planning board hearings, a Board of Adjustment hearings, a presentation to the Byway Valley National Scenic Byway Management Committee, and extensive comment and testimony, and again, the comment and testimony because there is such real affection and pride for this area, have been concerned for the byway, future precedence, and then the appropriateness of cluster development. This is very interesting site plan. This is not the original plan for rezoning that was submitted. This is a second submittal. From the department's perspective, we did not feel that the original rezoning request with site plan was acceptable in terms of protecting the byways and setting the kind of precedence that would maintain the character into the future. This plan came back after extensive discussion and it represents, as you see, the original plan had a 50-foot buffer. This plan has 125-foot property line buffer but 150-foot building setback. So no building will be closer than 150 feet to Route 100. On the side yard, which would be to the south, I have that direction right? On the side yard, the buffers have been increased from 30 to 50 feet for one area and from 50 to 75 feet. By right, there does not need to be a buffer on this side property yard. You'll also see the preservation of the existing forest and there is also preservation, as we look to the next slide, for recommendation to maintain the row of mature pines to be preserved. One point that you'll see from the planning board meeting minutes, a recommendation to consider trail in this area. That recommendation is predicated on maintaining this row of trees because the row of mature pines is really critical if we are not going to have any visibility. So the, when you see that recommendation, the trail was secondary to the row of trees. The next slide is, shows a slide where there's a significant setback. This is at Apple Cross. It's onseptic, not sewer, but they lack the mature vegetation, so the structures are visible. And this is a shot of the area that will have a conservation easement on it that will read for the benefit of Newcastle County so that those trees cannot come down. The next slide is a breakdown, a comparison of what could be done by right versus the proposed rezoning request. This slide had significantly affected the ultimate recommendation of the Land Use Department because we felt, after looking at all of the variables, that there was greater protection provided to this byway with the proposed rezoning than by right. You can see there is certainly a much larger 50 percent of the site open space under the proposed application. There's a much greater setback, both in terms of property line and again, buildings are 150 feet. The lot sizes are smaller. By right, two acres here ranging from 13,000 square feet to 22,000 square feet. The height is lower. They've proffered, the applicant has proffered, to a 35-foot height so that the combination of the forest, the mature pines, the height, the 150-foot building setback, and augmenting landscaping, it should be, I won't say impossible, but highly unlikely that people will be able to see any aspect of these structures. You have five new lots with the by right zoning, 12 new lots with the proposed open space option number two, and again, 100 percent preservation of the mature forest under the rezoning, 70 percent under the by right. So in conclusion, and again, this was, was an issue that we as professionals certainly grappled with because it's a very, very important site, but it was, it's our recommendation that the rezoning with the buffers, with the protection of the mature forest, with protection of the pines, with the significant side yard setbacks, provides greater scenic and physical protection to the future of the byways. Also, this site is sewored. We have in our report recommended that in the future, sites that are not sewored, as you go north on Route 100, should not be considered for future rezonings. And the last slide is the recommendation of the planning board, as well as the Land Use Department. And again, the recommendations are all conditioned on the items that I have just mentioned. And I think the bottom line from the planning board's comments was that they felt there was greater protection afforded with the kinds of conditions coupled with this rezoning for the future of this byway and they recommended approval. Thank you.
Also, let the record reflect that Councilman Bell was not going to be able to join us today. We have questions from council? Yes. Councilman Smiley?
Can you go back one slide? My question is, on your last bullet point, does that mean that a property owner or developer could not bring forward a rezoning if as part of that rezoning, they were going to pay for sewer installation to that property?
What that means is, it was simply, it was our recommendation. It certainly is not a policy and it's something the council may or may not want to include, but it was our recommendation that going north on Route 100, that we did not think that properties should be considered for rezoning if they were not sewored. So the answer to your question would be yes, but again, it is a recommendation. It is not, it is not tied directly to the application. It's something council could certainly say, you know, we support the application, but we think this is too far reaching.
But this recommendation does send the message that the county does not intend to extend sewer any further north.
It is in our report. If the council, I think, doesn't share that view, certainly it would be appropriate for the council to say, we don't share that view.
I don't know what happened in a world of yes and no's, but I think I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Weiner?
Thank you. Would you please go back to the second or third slide that has the map, the overview of the area? I want to ask first, once we get this map up, overview. You just passed it.
This way?
Yeah. No, the close-up. There you go. Would you talk about the pedestrian friendliness, the pathways either internally or externally? Particularly, there's one plan for the residents that would hook into an area along Buck Road.
Branch, you want to join me? There are pedestrian connections planned for this site and connecting to other sites. Again, the one that I think is the most significant for the council is the pedestrian, or the walkway, bike way along Route 100 because that, while it's an important connection, it also, we have a concern, as did the planning board, that it, if it goes forward, that it not be designed in a way that take away, that impact in any ways those existing trees.
Councilman Weiner, I think there's a sidewalk that was proposed with the Greenville Center, Brad Shoppley Land Use, with the Greenville Center Plan, and I believe it only went to the entrance to Greenville Manor.
Well, actually, there's a longer story on that, but the question I'm asking, and it'll get answered by Wendy Danner when she-
Yeah, because I think we migrated away from the applicant's presentation into-
Well, I've already, well, the question I have specifically deals with the partial necessity pathway that's planned from the site.
Right.
But we can wait for Wendy's to come forward on that.
And Councilman Cartier, is this something directly for Land Use or do you think we should go to the applicant?
No, I'd like to ask Wendy's. Correct me if I'm wrong, historically speaking, this parcel had sewer prior to the 1997 adoption of the Unified Development Code.
Yeah, it was prior to the E.C.
Right, so the suburban estate designation comes along with Unified Development Code, but the sewer already existed on the property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And something that I neglected to mention in the presentation is suburban estate is a designation that does not anticipate having sewer. So this site has a sewer and it has the designation of suburban estate.
And the record, if I can, Council President will look in. Councilman Powell is joining us. End street. Councilman Powers?
Yeah, I got a question. It's really pertaining, I guess, going up 100 with the pine trees that are maintained. I mean, I guess what my question is, they're going to leave them there, but who's going to maintain them?
Let me just go a couple more slides and we'll see the little pine trees, another couple. Another pine trees coming up, another couple of these pine trees.
He just went past it with his nose.
Pine trees, there. The pine trees, I believe, are within the open space and they will be protected and maintained.
I guess what my thing is, compared to hardwood, life expectancy isn't going to be that long. Now, is it supposed to be, when it starts, when they start dying, what's going to happen?
I think I can discuss that with a little person.
That's what I think, but it's kind of- How about we do? Okay, thank you, Ms. Fegarty. And Ms. Stabler, if you could come up, please. And also, if you would just take a minute to grab our state strategies, map against the wall there and show us where your application is quickly then.
Jimmy, where's a good place for me to present from? It's inside.
True. But these people fight with anyone.
Yes, we did.
Could we share that with everybody?
Absolutely. Because I should be members of council, Wendy Stabler for the applicant.
Put it right up there. Yep, there you go.
That worked.
Sign here. Okay.
Good, all right, perfect. And also, just as a quick side note for Land Use, perhaps in the Land Use presentation, it also may help with the new mapping and the new software that's been implemented and the updates. Maybe if you had that as part of maybe that PowerPoint at first, you probably showed that, put it on, that could be a very valuable component to the presentation. Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Wendy Stabler and I'm here for the applicant, the Mary Coy Carpenter Trust. So if you, if you could turn, I also have a PowerPoint. We did not coordinate it. It is a little bit duplicative, but the emphasis may be slightly different. I'll try to move through it quickly. Also, I wanted to let you know that my office dropped off a letter from me, as well as exhibits in support of this application. They are more extensive than my presentation today, so if you do have time and if you're really tired tonight and can't fall asleep, I invite you to take a look at it and seriously take an opportunity to take a look at the background on this. It's a project we're, we've been working on a long time. We're very, very proud of it and I think it really speaks for itself. As I said, I'm Wendy Stabler. I'm here with Willie Carpenter, who is the trustee of the Mary Coy Carpenter Trust, which is a trust that was established by his mother under her will. I have with me Ellen Tracy, who is our landscape architect and who has had a pivotal role in this application and will, I think, be able to speak to some of the questions about the buffering and the, and the trees because Ellen's been the architect of, literally the architect of that plan. Of course, you all know Ted Williams from Landmark Engineering and he is our project engineer. We've also been working with Andy Lubin, who could not be here today. He's the project consultant. So the project background and features, as we mentioned, this is quickly, I'm going to shift back to that, but this is a location map. You can see, you should be able to see here. This is a property, I refer to it as sort of being in the shape of the state of Delaware with Newcastle County being up here and Sussex County being down at the bottom. 141 is here, cross Route 141, go Route 100, hit Buck Road, you're going to go right, go to Hagling, Price Church, you're going to go left and get to the Village of Greenville, Greenville Center. So this property has been owned by the Carpenter family since the turn of the century when it was part of the DuPont Company and got spun off to a branch of the family. Willie grew up on the property. It has two existing legacy structures on it. It is, as you saw in the other plan, completely bordered by mature evergreens on all sides. It has a stream that runs along the back. It is almost perfect in the sense that it's got a wide open field that is the center of the property and is buffered by mature trees on all sides. So when Willie's mother passed away, left a new trust, the question arose as to what to do with this, this property. They had a large house on it, as well as a tenant house, which they very much wanted to preserve. They realized that this was on the scenic byway and they very much wanted to continue the historic situation of having mature trees border the property. They believed that it was appropriate to, if they were going to rezone the property, to establish a transition zone between the lower density properties to the north and the higher density properties directly adjacent and to the south. And they also wanted to be responsive to the market demand for alternative cluster housing with smaller homes on smaller lots, particularly given the fact that this property has historically, before 1997, been served by public water and sewer and as a consequence would be appropriate for some higher density development while preserving the open space and the buffers. So as I mentioned, here's a location map. You can see that the green areas and the zoning map represent the lower density two acre parcels to the north, as well as, whoops, as well as directly around this property at that corner, a very scenic corner of Buck Road and Route 100. We'll return to that during the course of the presentation. However, as you can also see by the zoning map, it's also surrounded by some higher density developments that are located on parcels that are somewhere around 15,000 square foot and those are shown in the lighter, lighter green area around here. And of course, that's, that's the proposed zoning for this property. So as Eileen mentioned, and as you can see, we've superimposed the exploratory plan now on, on top of your Google map. And the property, again, is about a 20 acre parcel of land. You see the Route 100 corridor right here, the mature trees at the corner of Buck Road and Route 100. And this is the existing home and the existing tenant house here at the corner. The idea was to subdivide these, leave them on large lots. So we're proposing to keep the main house on about a six acre parcel and the smaller tenant house on about two acres. Those parcels will actually have conservation easements put on them, so there will be, even though it's probably more like 60 percent open space, as a, as a matter of conservation, we will strictly impose conservation easement on what is about 25 percent, even though the existing zoning, the SE zoning requires only 5 percent. So the idea then was to create a small cluster style development to the, to the south of the property, which would have access directly across from the Monchan Drive access road. So it would line up along Route 100 where it was recommended by Del Da would be the safest point at the apex of the hill on Route 100, come into the development and have 12 cottage style lots that would be served by public sewer and water. There is an existing pond on the property and we would add a stormwater infiltration basin to go to the back. Also, 55 and older, simply because it's really directed toward empty nesters and we had no problem agreeing to a concept as that was really what the market demands. So just to recap, it's 12 lots of 14,000 to 20,000 square feet cottage style homes served by existing public sewer and water, access directly across from the Monchan Drive, the two large lots to remain on six and two acres respectively, and the maintenance of the massive buffering along Route 100, the scenic byway and the southern property line. And we have significantly enhanced that at the request of the Department of Land Use and in order to try to accommodate any concerns on the part of our neighbors. So these are just renderings, they're concept plans, but this is very much along the lines of what we anticipate will be built there. This is in response to the market demand for smaller structures. They're, they're obviously, you know, beautiful, they will be luxury, they will set a gold standard. They are not, you know, they're not affordable housing guys. They're, but they're nice and they're relatively downscale to some of the massive stuff that you're seeing out there. They're much more efficient. They are, they are proposed for master bedrooms on the main floor. Height restrictions, again, something we're very comfortable with. These are about 35, 30 to 35 feet in height. They're a story and a half with the main living proposed for the main floor. They're a turnkey in the sense that they're, you know, supposed to be quite efficient and intended, again, to accommodate folks who, who may be getting older but still very mobile, traveling and want to be able to continue to enjoy living in this beautiful part of the county. So have we met the standards? I, I really think we have. You all are aware of the standards that I have to meet in order to convince you that the rezoning is appropriate under the Unified Development Code. So the first is consistency with a comprehensive plan. That is the one element that needs tweaking. It is not consistent with a comprehensive plan, which calls this low density and rural. However, the, as pointed out, this really is a growth part of the county and it's identified by the state as, as a growth, growth area. It is served by public water and sewer, sort of among the last properties on the line. And for that reason, we think it is, in fact, consistent, certainly with, certainly with the state plan, although not technically with the county plan. Consistency with the character of the neighborhood, I'm going to show you a couple of slides on that, but I think that this really tells the story. There are plenty of, in the immediately adjacent area, there are a lot of developments including Greenville Manor, the Monchan, the Ponds, and the Briars with lot sizes that are basically the same or smaller and certainly with a gross density that is more dense than this So that also addresses consistency with zoning and using nearby properties. These, these types of homes actually are characteristic of a lot of the areas immediately adjacent. Some of the smaller types of houses that were built in the, in the 70s that have not been, been built recently, they're very characteristic and very similar. And your package that you'll have at your desk has a number of those pictures to show you that and tell that story. The suitability of the property for the uses, of course, it is already public watered and sewored and therefore appropriate for a cluster style development. Effect on the nearby properties, I think we have done backflips to try to ensure that the scenic byway will be preserved and that the buffers and the view shed for the traveling public will be, will be honored and preserved and in fact, enhanced. And not only do we preserve the buffers, but we are significantly enhancing them with added trees that will, if the pine, if we lose the pines, serve as a buffer, additional buffer, so to the backs of the houses. The Newcastle County Development Land Use Recommendation, of course, is in favor of this project. I think that there was a good deal of input. There were folks that didn't believe necessarily that higher density was good and they thought that under any stretch, we shouldn't get it, but there was a lot of people also that weighed in that were very much in favor of having this type of housing option. I think in the end, the county, of course, Land Use Department speaks for itself, but the merits of the project and the significant restrictions that we were willing to put on it in order to secure- on it in order to secure your endorsement, I think, were, made the day for us. This is a very important chart, it's very similar to, I think, what Ms. Bogarty presented to you. Unfortunately, I have a typo in this one, that .068 should be .68 in your package. This is correct, but when it got transcribed for the PowerPoint, we added a zero in the wrong place, so I apologize for that. But this is very, very important for those that are concerned that we're adding something or a type of development in this area that is not consistent with the surrounding areas. It's absolutely not true, we're smack in the middle, whether you take it in, taking into account a 14-lot subdivision or a 12-lot subdivision. And in fact, those small lot subdivisions around us are higher in density and have significantly less open space. We, of course, are proposing 50% open space in the 12-lot subdivision of itself. This gives you, just, again, this imposes our plan on the Google map and shows you the developments that I was talking about and their location, which is, you know, Monchan directly across the way, the Briars here, which is at 52, the Ponds. All of these developments in Greenville Manor have densities that are right in line with those that are proposed by this 12-lot subdivision. So, the professional support that you've heard about is in some because they view it as a far better plan than a byright option because of the way it protects and preserves the corridors. We do have support of the neighborhood of Centennial, which has negotiated private deed restrictions, which will be enforceable by Centennial and the KPA. Those include restrictions on height, restrictions on density, additional conservation easement areas, restriction on access, limited to 55 and older, and I think that's it. You've seen this chart in a different form. Again, on the left shows what a byright plan would involve and on the right shows what our plan is. So you see both from traffic, open space, height, the setbacks, the screening, and the mature forest preservation, all of those key elements are better under this plan than under a byright plan. So nobody does deserve a rezoning, I'm not here to tell you we deserve a rezoning. I think this applicant has earned a rezoning for this property. So in conclusion, I think we have done a lot to preserve the byway, to preserve the legacy structures. We are proposing a responsible cluster development on a highly desirable property already served by public water and sewer. That beautiful view that you see now coming up Route 100 is the same beautiful view that you all are going to continue to enjoy after this project and you're going to create, hopefully, a project which folks want to live in and be proud to be part of the town. If you had any questions that you might have.
Ms. Damon, how about if you touch on the questions you heard from council a few minutes ago?
Yes.
The pedestrian, the massive buffering, the responsibility of it, and also the note on the plan for maybe some future rezoning.
Yeah, so while Ted's getting ready, Ted, do you want to show the plan for the interconnection that you're proposing? So Ted's going to pull out and answer the question regarding the interior walkways and the situation of Route 100. As Ms. Bogarty alluded to, we are very amenable to whatever they want on the byway, whether it be a bike path or a multipurpose path. However, the most, you know, the highest priority should be the preservation of those trees and so we would not want to agree to anything that would affect that. Ellen, Tracy is here, they can address the issue of the evergreen trees, but we are proposing a additional screening so that if we should lose a tree, you will still not see those houses. And I am also, we are also entering into restrictions with Centennial whereby, you know, when we lose trees, that we would have appropriate obligations to replace them as well, if it was necessary to ensure that we had the same level of capacity that we have right now. Ted, do you want to answer the question about the...
Yes, Ted Williams with Landmark Science and Engineering. To answer the question about sidewalks, we are providing sidewalks on both sides in the internal streets. They are connecting out to Route 100, this location here. We have not shown the actual trail that we're going to be constructing along there at this time, but we will be adding that as part of our coordination with Deltad. Just long as we make sure we put the trail in there that meets Deltad's requirements for the clear area between the actual travelway and this trail, and also to be able to make sure we maintain the mature trees along here, which are this area right along here. But we are going to be running out all the way from our southern property line up to the intersection with Buck Road, that location there. In addition to that, our intent is to possibly also be able to provide some type of connection over to the existing estate if it's possible. That's one thing we've been looking at to see if there's some type of sidewalk to take us out on Buck Road. So if somebody wants to get out to Buck Road, they can, and they'll be able to go down towards Christ Church or to the Hagley area.
Yeah, the idea would be actually, I'd probably prefer not to have sidewalks, but we'll do what's mandatory, but there is, will be an interconnection, walkways, there is an existing driveway that serves this house, that you can walk out through here and walk up Buck Road.
Yeah, Councilwoman Warner.
Yes, would you please, for the record, designate which of the two parcels you anticipate the trail, the walking path, would be cut through on the property line to the existing two larger houses?
The idea would be that if we were to install, and I don't know that we need to, because I don't think you want to destroy the character of these two homes that we're trying to preserve, there is an existing driveway, whether we would provide some sort of pedestrian easement or whatever. I don't think the plan currently calls for any sidewalk out there.
No, it doesn't. I think our biggest connection would be is having the trail connecting sidewalk, this location here where the main entrance is on Route 100, all the way up to the Buck Road intersection at this location. That way it can be continued in the future by Deltad or whoever desires to be able to put additional pathways up in that area, whether it continues on Buck Road over to the Greenville Center or continues on up Route 100. But this time, we're only going to be taking the trail here and amplify that connection down to Buck Road, and there is area along there that you can walk along Buck Road if you wanted to go to Christ Church or Hagley. There's no, they had sidewalk in that location, but there is an area to walk down.
I'm very familiar, just for the record, I want to say that Buck Road to the east of Route 100 is very walkable and would enable folks to enjoy the beauty of the area, not only residents but visitors as well. And it's hoped ultimately that there'll be pathways for people to enjoy the only nationally-designated scenic byway in Delaware along Route 52, Route 100. Ultimately, I hope that the state will master plan a pathway along the west side of Buck Road between Route 52 and Route 100. It's likely that it would have to be paid by the, and donated by future owners, so you're looking at a 20-, 30-, 40-year build-out, but every, these projects have to go over a long period of time.
And this becomes a piece of that.
Yes.
So this, we think this is very good, like you said, east of Route 100, Buck Road is very walkable. Low volume of traffic going down towards Christ Church and Hagley in the Soto House area, so this is very suitable for that.
Great, thank you.
And could you show us also, is there any public transportation in that area?
There is certainly, there rides up Kennet Pike.
There's no public transportation on Route 100. The bus route does run up Route 52. Right now, there would not be a capability of walking to Route 52 from this location because there are no sidewalks on Buck Road on the west side. Potentially, somebody could walk through the subdivision of Monchan, I don't believe they have sidewalks, but they do have wide streets in there, they could walk through there and come out on Buck Road a little bit farther to the west and possibly from there be able to get to Greenville Center and be able to get to Mass Transit.
I know we flagged down a chauffeur going by.
If we're out by then, they're... Councilman Cartier.
Just refocus discussion back on maintaining the buffer.
Yes.
So if you could give us some idea of that.
Okay, so, there are, Ellen, I don't know if you want to address this in detail, but we do have a scenic buffer plan as well as the obligation to maintain the pine trees. So Councilman Cartier, all along there, and actually, there was a good question asked and I did want to clarify, along, in the area that is, so in the area that is going to be rezoned with your permission, if you endorse it, hold on. That is going to be, those area of trees will be in the public, public open space, private dedicated open space. The areas that are on, part of the pine trees that are on the two lots that are fronting, I don't know where Jimmy is, I can't seem to scroll this up, but they will be in private, they will be in conservation easements. And the terms of those easements, thanks so much, and the terms of those easements will be, so what we're talking about is the area of these lots here, these trees will be in a conservation easement and the owners of those parcels will have obligations to preserve those trees. The area along Route 100 that will be in the S, excuse me, S zoning district will be in private open space and will be the obligation of the Maintenance Association for Wagoner's Row. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ellen Tracy, landscape architect. And this is a graphic which sort of helps to give you a sense of some of the massive buffering that's along the scenic corridor. And I guess when you consider a scenic corridor, you consider it in two realms. One is the buffering aspect, which is really easy to do, you know, backdropping the pines, adding fencing, facing the materials off, filling in with the additional street trees in between there are existing deciduous trees that are along the road as well as the heavy pine buffer. But the other part of the scenic corridor is the character of the area. And the concept is, you have this huge width, this great preservation, but we want to maintain the character and enhance it in the same venue, so the same character. If the pines in the future were to die or be damaged in storm damage, because we know after this winter, white pines are very susceptible to ice storm and storm damage, losing lower branches, they could be replaced within the venue that we've created here so that the object is to preserve the character of this scenic byway. So if you come up over that hill and you travel down Route 100 either direction, you're going to maintain that character and you're not even going to know that there's a project of cottage-style homes on the other side of it, simply because your vista and your experience of the scenic corridor has remained the same and it's been enhanced. And how we're doing that is we're facing off the roadway side of the existing pines by taking some precautions and limbing them up and pruning them so that they have more longevity, facing them all so that the lower view underneath the pines is blocked from the backyards or the spaces of the homes, which are quite a distance away. On the other side of the pines, we're providing a fence so that the headlights from the roadway don't have any impact on the houses or any of the activities in the backyards of the houses, even at such a great distance, with outdoor lighting not having any impact on the scenic corridor. And then for the residents, we're providing a buffer on the backside of the fence so that they don't see a fence. We have a cross-section here too as well.
One thing I did want to point out, Ellen, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but a similar buffer plan has been proposed for the southern property line, almost the same density. And if you say, well, who's going to enforce that? We have agreed to these buffering plans as conditions of the variances that were granted by the Board of Adjustments, so they are a record and are, will run with the land in those obligations.
So this is sort of a little cross-section watercolor of the kind of density that you're going to have with your pines in the center. You're going to have the street trees, which we have spacing of existing large canopy trees that would remain. The walkway that's going to go along Route 100 would have to meander and be carefully constructed between the existing deciduous trees and the existing pines so that we don't damage the root systems, so that we preserve everything, we don't, you know, overgrade that. So that has to be taken into account. Then we have evergreen material, which faces off the buffer, the fence, and then the buffer behind the fence, so that from both directions, you're going to maintain that character as you go down the Route 100 and it's the vista, it's all about the scenic corridor. It's obviously going to do a significant job of screening, but the concept is to, you know, maintain that character. The UDC prescribes that we follow an open space management program as a part of anything that flies through the Unified Development Code. And as a part of that matrix, we have the maintenance for all the buffer materials, all the street trees, all the stormwater management, you know, the lawn cutting, the heights of the lawn cutting. So everything's taken into account so that the maintenance by the Community Association follows that open space management program matrix.
Finally, let me just point out that, I don't think we need to go into that unless they ask, but I did want to point out, you know, the code requires street trees here, so that's like three-inch caliper every 40 feet, which is not much. When you talk about, you've seen areas where they've been installed, all the time, they will, they will serve that buffering function, but they don't initially. So we really think that this is a plan that with all the landscape elements that are just going to absolutely enhance the corridor as opposed to the other way around.
Councilman Powers, you got a question?
Yeah, you could probably put that out. Where, what's the distance off the road where these are planted? Okay, you got the trees.
Where...
I understand.
Where the, where the pines exist?
Yeah, first the pines exist.
Okay, the existing pines are about 50 feet back from the pavement surface.
Now, the trees you're putting in front of, how far off are they?
They will probably be about 25 to 30 feet, shade-loving, underneath the edge of the branches. The pines, which pinestrobis, white pine, typically loses its lower branches as it ages, they don't get broken off by ice storms, et cetera. So as a part of this planting, we're going to facilitate that by limbing them up ahead of their demise so that we can underplant with shade-loving evergreen materials, rhododendrons, azaleas, hollies, on that faced edge, that is an edge that won't get sun, however, then there's going to be street trees.
Yeah, I guess that isn't really my question.
And the trees will far exceed, there's other requirements of Deltad, that might be one of the things you're considering.
That's what I'm concerned. What's their right-of-way for Deltad?
The right-of-way width there is 30 foot from the center line. The trees will be approximately 20 feet beyond that right-of-way line.
I mean, even in my district, they can mow almost 20 feet down.
Well, Deltad doesn't do any of the mowing along here. Currently, this is being maintained by the state.
I understand. In rural areas, they'll go over people's crops.
I understand. But is there...
It affects their right-of-way.
Yeah. All the maintenance of the, for cutting the grass, everything, they've taken care of Mr. Carpenter's family over the last hundred-some years and will continue to be done, so with the Maintenance Association.
I was just asking for, because you're pointing to something, eventually they widen the road and even looking at, you know, the walkways down through here.
Right. The one thing...
You know, they plant something, take it there.
Your concern is well-founded, although I will say that, given that it is a national scenic byway, one of the major tenets of it is that they have identified this as an area where it should not be blinded. So even though Deltad, of course, is asking us for the standard road dedication, I hope, our hope is, I'm sure our councilman will fight it, is that that, the character of that, of that road is a narrow two-lane road without shoulders, won't change, maybe a bike road, maybe a bike path, but, I mean, otherwise, I mean, you make an excellent point because it would be something susceptible of being taken, yeah.
We have additional questions from members of council.
Yeah, I thought you said we talked about...
Yeah, we talked about...
Nobody is.
Okay, great. My experience with white pines is, as you say, I have a row of white pines behind my house, although my property's a little smaller, between Route 261 and, and my property, the lower branches, they're 60 years old, they're about 80 feet tall, the lower branches have been damaged by ice. We've trimmed them off, we've done evergreen fill-in, we've put in a fence, and we've done flower planting as well. It's a good visual buffer as well. There is a sidewalk along Route 261 Falk Road. It's in a much more constrained area on Falk Road, but it mimics in a much smaller way this, and I do, do want to note that I agree with you and with Councilman Powers that the white pines ultimately do come down in age. I'm figuring it's 60 years, I'm going to be spending money... I'm figuring at 60 years, I'm going to be spending money at some point to replace them.
Well, with the UDC, when something is recorded on a plan, which the existing vegetation will be credited and recorded, as well as all the proposed vegetation, when something comes down, it needs to be replaced.
Right, and I have an obligation under my community enforced deed restrictions to replace those trees and keep a visual buffer, so I have the same obligation as well, on a much smaller scale I might have.
Sixty years, it'll be somebody else's problem.
Right.
Let's turn now to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions? Yes, sir.
Chairman Tackett, members of County Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Dan Zizer. I'm president of the Kennet Pike Association. Our organization for the last 57 years has been protecting, preserving, and beautifying the Kennet Pike and Route 100 corridors. We do that with volunteers and members from the community and the business community. We have about 275 members who live and work along the Kennet Pike and Route 100 corridors. I'm also a member of the Brandywine Valley National Scenic Byway Management Committee and also a member of the Advisory Board that was recently formed through state legislation to create a Brandywine Valley National Scenic Byway Advisory Board chaired by Del Dot Secretary Bott. This project presents to our community two legitimate options for this parcel of property. We could have large houses on two-acre properties along the lines of Apple Cross, or we could have smaller clustered homes with more property left as open space. Both of these options are reasonable and both are worthy of consideration. Our organization, the Kennet Pike Association, has chosen to stay neutral in this case. We're neither supporting this application nor are we opposing it. But our neighbors in Centennial who are supporting this, this proposal, asked the Kennet Pike Association if we would help them devise, monitor, and enforce some voluntary deed restrictions that, that have been negotiated. And just, I think Wendy touched on, on most of them, but we have agreed with the applicant a series of restrictions that would be enforceable by the Centennial neighborhood and by KPA, and they include things like restrictions that these must be private detached, single-family residences only, that there'll be no business or institutional use on the property, that we talked about the conservation easement and the protection of trees, one detached unit per lot, the age restriction, which Wendy already mentioned, the 35 foot height restrictions, as well as setback restrictions. So we, as I said, are not endorsing this, but we will, and we are happy to play a role in enforcing some private deed restrictions. I do want to say in closing, though, that the KPA thanks the applicant for reaching out to the community and discussing issues with the community and responding to concerns of the community. I think this applicant has done a good job of trying as best they can to meet the community's concerns. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Powers?
I just got one question, and maybe Wendy can answer. The strip between the first lot on the right and the rest of it, what exactly is that?
It's a precautionary slope upon which it should not be built, so that's why we added it. It's part of the, it'll be part of the dedicated open space taken care of by the...
How much of a slope is it?
The precautionary, what's the technical?
It's less than 15%, but it is more than the standard slopes, so that is an area we cannot develop in.
And other than, I did, the collective pointed out that other than the access road, just the small area there, that none of the protective resources, none of the protective resources on this property are going to be disturbed. That's pretty unusual, even though the code does allow, which has certain protection levels to be disturbed.
I should have reminded you that if you actually drive off...
Just a reminder that any time you speak, you need to send your name because it takes...
Ted Williams, Landmark. Is that there will be no trees cut down to put in the new access road. If you go out there today, there is a gap in the wood, the woods line along Route 100 directly opposite Monchan, which is where our entrance is going to be, and that's where the road will be, no trees in that area.
All right.
Just one thing in closing, and I'd be remiss, obviously, I've asked you for your position and asked for your support, it's Wendy Stabler again for the record. I did want you to be aware that, we are aware that someone does intend to file an appeal of the variances that were granted by the Board of Adjustment in connection with this matter. It is our position as a matter of law that that changes nothing. We obviously are, if that is in fact filed, we will have to defend that as, and the county would do so as well as the Board of Adjustment granted those variances by decision of five to one, I believe that was it. And so that will proceed in any event, but there is absolutely no reason for this council not to proceed forward with this action. We believe that the plan is teed up and ready, and we would ask you to proceed. Thanks so much.
Well, Ms. Stabler, obviously, as you know, on all intents and purposes, this will be on next Tuesday's agenda barring any impedances, and you have a sponsor here and they will be leading us through the process, so please stay tuned as, you know, obviously hopefully we'll be alerted if there's any theory, or let's say, or whatever, as to it being on the agenda next Tuesday night.
Thank you, and I invite you, if you have any questions, when you look at the packet to please give your...
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see, nothing else. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. Councilman Powers and Councilman Sheldon, 13097. And I think GM will give a brief presentation.
Very brief, thank you, sir. Um, is... The ordinance that Councilman Powers and Councilman Sheldon have introduced is an ordinance that will amend the code so that DENREC will have the authority to administer onsite wastewater treatment. Right now, DENREC is the permitting agency, so what you have in essence today is you have the county reviewing all these septic applications, and then after we review them, next slide, thanks. After we review them, then DENREC reviews them, and DENREC ultimately has the authority as the permitting agency. So what this ordinance does, it recognizes that you have a duplicative effort and an effort which adds both time and review, so it simply, the ordinance recognizes that DENREC is the permitting agency, that DENREC is the one that reviews applications. There is a slight difference between the county standards and DENREC's, but that is really of no issue because new lots all require, if they're going to have septic, to have a one-acre minimum lot size. So there, in reality, there is no difference between the county standards and DENREC. And if you look on the next slide, DENREC has been consistently updating regulations. They have a comprehensive septic system, regulatory system in place now, and in the last slide, there are a whole range of regulations and issues that DENREC has addressed that 10, 15 years ago weren't addressed. So we, we support this application as does the planning board because what it does is remove the redundancy in the process.
Questions for members of council for the department? Where the sponsors?
I, um...
Councilman Powers?
I brought this forward, and I think it was a couple of us that have septics. It just has added a lot more time. DENREC regulates them, whatever is accepted is DENREC's, you know, we don't accept the design, DENREC accepts it. If you sell your house with a septic, DENREC's the one that's going to come out and inspect it, that it just is adding another layer to, especially in rural areas, for building a house with septic system.
Councilman Wyner?
Thank you. Just having a lot of septic in my SE and also having lived through 1997 where you were involved as well as I, at that time, is it my recollection correct that the standards were different and there was a reason why Newcastle County needed to have its own standards because we were more restrictive than DENREC at the time?
I think at the time, and going back to that, was we were having a lot of septic systems failing, and that's why they went through. And it's almost the same thing that we're hearing with our FOG program, is people can't, you know, they were moving out of the city, dumping their grease and failing their systems. The major thing is inspections, you know, was part of it. But the thing that I think that's kind of improved is that the people, I went back after a meeting you and I were in that said we needed to, because they fail within how many years. And I went back at the time to a Farm Bureau meeting with people that had septic systems for 50 years, they never failed. My system was put in 1960, it's never failed. But you, it's just the same as our sewer lines, you cannot dump grease. It will affect quicker on your septic system than it will on the county system. And I think we're not seeing the, you know, DENREC isn't seeing them fail as they were. Adding that second system, if DENREC requires it, they will still have the chance to do that. But I don't, they don't even feel, you know, we're not talking to people there that it's needed. So it's just adding a lot of cost to somebody building a house.
Great, well, I'm certainly in favor of that, and I look forward to supporting your ordinance change.
Any more questions for members of council? Turning to the public. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, okay, next item on the agenda is other. Did we have, anybody have any...
Pass on to Councilman Street regarding the, Councilman Street, Councilman Holland and I went to see the mayor regarding the Redding statue, we have a report here with Councilman Street.
To make it long story short, the mayor, in our presence, directed that the statue of Louis O. Reddy climbed.
Good.
Congratulations.
Anytime.
Six months of talking and you did it in six minutes.
Anything else under other? Public comment?
Again.
My name is Peggy Schultz. I represent the League of Women Voters of Newcastle County. The League applauds County Council for changing the format of presentations to the council with the presentation of all land use proposals now being made by the Department of Land Use. This format offers a professional introduction of facts and issues on proposed projects. When questions occur, citizens' right to know and their ability to participate in government decision-making can be met with objective information. The League also appreciates having been invited by the Land Use Department's General Manager to attend a meeting of community leaders in order for the department to get input on our perceptions of the comprehensive plan. We are grateful for these forward steps.
There's no but?
There's no but.
There's no but.
It's early.
Should save that for the next meeting. Anybody else in the room? Okay, seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
On paper.
Aye.